Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our school board meeting tonight. We're going to begin with some comments by Dr. Gabriel. And following her comments, I will come back and walk you through the rest of the agenda for the evening. Dr. Gabriel.
Good evening. We request that all cell phones and pages be turned to vibrate or turned off during the course of this meeting. Thank you. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and remain standing for the sighting of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
So this evening, in addition to our regular business meeting, we also are holding a public hearing on our budget, which is now really the, becoming the board's proposed budget to city council. As you know, the board has been working throughout the year on a variety of initiatives and having conversations around our budget, fiscal year 2019 budget. At this point, we've had a few meetings with the superintendent and the board discussing the budget. We had an earlier work session today. And so what I'm going to do right now is open up a public hearing on the superintendent's slash school board's proposed fiscal year 2019 educational plan and budget. So before we go through the process of calling individuals to the microphone to give additional comments, I want to share some things with the public based upon our conversation and public hearing that we had last week, as well as discussions that the school board has had earlier. So first, I'd just like to share some items that came up in the last public hearing that now is in part of, or at least making sure that the public is aware of as far as the proposed budget. So substitute nurses included in our proposed budget at this time is $134,000 for substitute slash floating nurse pool, which is equivalent to four part-time employees. That was already in the superintendent's proposed budget. And if you want to make a note, that's on page 201 under contract services for the superintendent's proposed budget. Regarding guidance counselors, we are realigning or are realigning existing staff that equivalent to 86.5 full-time equivalent guidance counselors, which allows us to have one guidance counselor for every elementary school. So I want to make that clear, that we have one, at least one guidance counselor for every elementary school. There's a question about legal services. Really some time ago, the school board, in an effort to try to make sure that there were resources available for the superintendent on the board to deal with legal matters, when we felt it was best for us to seek outside counsel. There's a total of $58,500 dealing with independent legal services. Those funds are identified under contract services. $50,000 of that is within the superintendent's budget and $8,500 is within the school board's budget. There also is consideration for a part-time position currently for a grant writer to have that position moved to a full-time grant writer position. This afternoon, we had, oh, before I move to that, also in the superintendent's proposed budget, we have bus attendants. There are 15 bus attendants that would become full-time. These are bus attendants that are designated for support for buses who are picking up children with disabilities. So we're in the past, we've had those part-time positions. These would be full-time positions with benefits. Earlier today, as part of the school board's work session, we've also added a couple of other items to the proposed budget. That includes a recommendation for us to have GPSs, GPSs, so GPS on our, on our school buses, and also for the establishment of a wellness coordinator. So while the superintendent's proposed budget included a $6 million ask of city council as part of the balancing of the budget, the school board's proposed budget now takes that $6 million to $6,200,000, which would be inclusive of GPS on buses and a wellness coordinator position. So did I forget anything? Get all of that? So just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. So our plan later on this evening, follow this hearing, is to have further discussion on the budget and hopefully be prepared to adopt the budget. But I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of those modifications as you prepare to come forward and address the board. So first, we're going to begin with this public hearing. We would ask that if, when your name is called, if you would come to the microphone. You'll have up to three minutes to address your thoughts regarding the proposed budget to the board. We ask at this time that you restrict your comments to the proposed budget. Once we finish this public hearing portion, we will have an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda and non-agenda items as we would normally do at the, at the business meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn to Mr. Butts, and if you would begin to call individuals to the podium. So, Mr. Butts, if you could just state your name when you come to the podium, and also if there's any relevant information that you would like to share with the school board as far as if you're an employee, or if you have children in division, you know, that's up to you, but we, it's always good to hear what your connection is to the division should you have one. So with that, Mr. Butts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have about 19 speakers who've signed up. First, we have Jalen Mitchell, to be followed by Philip Hawkins, Jr. We don't have Jalen Mitchell, we can start with Mr. Hawkins, Jr., to be followed by
Good evening, school board. Chair, Mr. Jordan, Vice Chair, Dr. Noel Gabriel, members of the Norfolk School Board, Superintendent Dr. Boone, and MPS administrative team. Good evening. My name is Philip Hawkins, Jr., and I am a lifelong resident of Norfolk, a proud graduate of Norview High School, and the mighty Spartans of the Norfolk State University. Behold the green and gold. And I am also the president of the Education Association of Norfolk, the EAN, affiliated with the VEA and the NEA, the largest labor union in the United States. I am a proud pre-K, 3, early childhood educator here at Norfolk Public Schools at the PB Young Senior Elementary School, where fluency is music to our ears. Ears representing fluency with expression, with accuracy, with rate, and with smoothness for our students, with 20 years of teaching and leadership experience with Norfolk Public Schools. First, I would like to thank the school board, Dr. Boone, and the administrative team of Norfolk Public Schools, along with the ODU Student Virginia Education Association members for participating in the NEA Read Across America Day event earlier this month on Friday, March 2nd, in the week of, of March 2nd. The events held in all of our schools were a great success, and we look forward to leading the partnership again next year, as we continue to celebrate a diverse community of readers and lifelong learners. Tonight, I am here to speak at this second public hearing to express that I'm still very concerned, I do appreciate you giving us that information about updates to the budget, but we're still concerned that the critical areas, other critical areas of the schools are still hindered in our overall success. And many students and parents and community members feel that the amount of money is still not enough. So we are still requesting, I did not hear salaries for teachers, 3.3 on an average scale will still not be enough to hopefully keep many of our educators, our experienced veteran teachers here in Norfolk. So I'm afraid that maybe in the fall, we may come to empty classrooms, and not just with teachers, with other support instructional staff. We have heard from the consultants. We know, we know what's going on in Norfolk. Many of our buildings are still in poor condition, so we need more maintenance money to repair our 50 schools. Although they added rebuilt five schools in Norfolk, they are here, we still need more facilities that are to be upgraded for our students so that we can provide the education that they need. So with that said, we really must focus on our school employees. If we don't put an investment in our human capital, there will be no future for our students. We have to invest in our people so that they can be there to support our students. And next, I would like to also ask that we would provide more funding for our trauma-informed care schools. I work at PB Young Senior Elementary School, and we have a talented staff there that wants to stay there. Our students need us, but help us to stay there. I'm, I'm also requesting, I do, I'm happy that we do have school counselors at every building, but I did not hear anything, well, we did hear something about the part-time nurses, but we still need to have more details about what that schedule would look like because on the days when we don't have a nurse, the office staff becomes the nurse, or we have to send children home, and they can't learn like that, and that's a distraction to the teaching and learning process. I will send my full statement to you, and I look forward to seeing the city council at the next public hearing, but you will be hearing from the EAN.
Mr. Chairman, superintendent, school board, good evening. My name is Thomas Calhoun. I am the president of Norfolk Federation of Teachers. I also reside in Waterford in Norfolk. I'm here tonight to say a couple of things. To thank you, first of all, for the program, your three-step program of putting teachers on their right steps. When I left office, when I left the school system, excuse me, six and a half years ago, I had 17 years of teaching, and I was on step 11. We stopped even looking at the steps because we never knew when we was going to get one. I was in a meeting this week with some of my members who were asking, were we still doing that? I know this is two of three. I hope that next year, school board finishes this off. I hope we get enough money to finish that. As you know, it affects what they make now, and it affects retirement. We've been arguing about it for years. I was sat in those meetings when you all decided to do that, as a school board, to do the study and to get this done. So I want to see this taken to fruition, to get these teachers where they belong and as well as all our classified ones too. What you're doing with the bus drivers, I can remember the first time they got together and came here and spoke, and then they started coming every meeting. And to see that they're going to be the second highest paid if we get what we want in this budget, it's very good. Well, I just heard about the attendance. I talked to some of those this week, too. There are a lot of good things in this budget. Money for teachers working and hard to staff schools, or stipend for that. We're pushing for that, it's, it's a fact in a lot of places in America, as you all know. Certainly would like to see that here. There's no such thing as a perfect budget, or anything else. So when I listen to all the speakers who come up and state their positions and do a great job, I remember sitting here last year at this meeting and listening to a lot of speakers. And I remember thinking that, sure, hope to see them at Granby High School when we go to city council, because all of us ain't doing nothing but talking if the council doesn't give us the money. So everyone that speaks tonight and states their positions, I certainly hope to see you all, as my colleagues said, at the city council meeting. Because we can ask you all for the moon, and you can write anything, but if the city council doesn't give us the money, we're just spinning wheels. So let me state here clearly tonight, that I'll be there, and NFT will be there, as we were last year, as we are every year. Whatever budget that goes to them, we're going to be there fighting with you, asking, talking with you, to get what you asked for in that budget for our employees and our kids. And I hope to see a lot of other people there, too.
Next, we have Robert Lincoln, to be followed by Rebecca Deweze.
Good evening, members of the school board. Tonight, I want to address the athletic programs of the Norfolk schools and the cost and benefits of those programs. I don't know where that is in the budget, so I just basically addressed the cost of the athletic programs. And I want to put into perspective the cost that would be involved in adding a program, a new sport to the, to the schools called poleball. We use our schools to trans, to train our schools' minds, and in some extent, to train their bodies for their physical wellbeings. We train their bodies with games and sports such as football, soccer, lacrosse, and field hockey. These are well-established sports, but they come with some problems, such as injuries and significant cost of equipment. These games also limit the skills that each player utilize. I want to introduce you to poleball, a new sport that will benefit more of the children and will cost almost nothing to add to the school's programs. Poleball utilizes each children's, child's ability to run, throw, catch, kick, and work together with others on a team. It is, it is designed to eliminate the serious injuries and to reduce minor injuries and the cost of equipment needed to play. The game of poleball can be played on fields that are used for football, soccer, lacrosse, or field hockey. Then all you need are players and a soccer ball. Existing markings on all the fields can be used to play poleball, but the markings on the field for field hockey are the best. And boys, both boys and girls can play poleball, or play it together. It's a, it's a sport that doesn't have injuries or hitting. Making this sport a part of each school's program will give more students the opportunity to participate in some sport. Students who fail to make the teams of the existing sports can play poleball, and there will be no cost or special equipment. A more detailed description of the game can be found in three websites devoted to the game of poleball. Poleballworld.com, poleball.us, and poleball.org. I'll leave a copy of these rules and games for the board's use. I'm asking the board to come to consider the benefits of the game of poleball for the children and the athletic programs of the schools of Norfolk, the elementary schools, the middle schools, and the high schools. Then the board can recommend that the sport or game be introduced to the students through the recess programs, the physical education classes, and your intermeum programs. I hope possibly, as soon as possible, this spring, summer, or fall. I'll be happy to assist in introducing the game to schools and to the students. I can provide some guidance to each of them. Thank you.
And I failed to mention earlier, if you'd like to leave your statement, you can give it to the clerk, and he'll make sure we get copies of it.
Good evening. My name is Becky Deweze, and I'm the school counselor at Larchmont Elementary School. This is my 20th year working as a counselor with Norfolk Public Schools. I began this school year working at both my school and Norview Elementary School one day of the week. I'm here to speak about the importance of having a full-time counselor in every elementary school. Society today is a challenge with an increase in the number of suicides among young adults, and the number of school shootings, and in providing support to students' overall mental health. Currently, there are nine elementary schools that have a counselor only three or four days a week. School counselors use a three-pronged approach to provide services for students. Counselors provide academic, social-emotional, and career-development lessons and support to all students. With some counselors only available three or four days a week, which of these life skills would you find it acceptable to ignore? Do we not expose students to careers? Do have students go through school having no understanding of how school relates to the world of work? Or have no exposure to careers other than those of their parents and the educators that work with them? Or if that doesn't seem wise, do we allow students' academic needs to suffer? Surely, it doesn't make sense to anyone in this room to withdraw support in helping students to achieve their full potential in academics. School counselors help students to acquire study skills, organizational skills, and encourage students to overcome difficulties so they can reach their potential and experience success in school. Many students in Norfolk start school as tier-two and-three students. The elementary counselors work closely with classroom teachers to provide support to students and their families. The remaining area addressed by school counselors is students' social-emotional well-being or concerns. Failing to address their needs in this area will surely produce more troubled young adults like the ones we've been seeing in the news. It is undeniable there has been an increase in these disturbing news stories since just the beginning of this year. Ignoring the social-emotional needs of children will only cause a greater increase in the number of these tragedies. You may think that only troubled students need support in the social-emotional area, however, that's simply not true. School counselors provide support to students whose parents are divorcing, support to students who have a parent who is deployed, students who are having difficulty being assertive with kids who bother or tease them, and students who have to learn conflict management skills. Working with students on these issues helps them to develop skills they will carry with them throughout their lives. Do you recommend counselors cut their time with children who need support in any of these areas? I think we all know this is an unacceptable option. Hopefully, we're all in agreement that all of these services provided by school counselors should be non-negotiables in every Norfolk public school. In a time when everyone in the country agrees that an increase in mental health services are needed in schools, Norfolk Public Schools has a system in place this school year that does the opposite. We offer a decrease in services. We simply cannot assess that a child in one school who has needs is less important than a child in another. The citizens of Norfolk and I implore you to provide a full-time counselor in every elementary school and additional support for those schools with over 500 students. To quote Alan Beck, "In teaching, you can't do the Bloom stuff until you take care of the Maslow stuff." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenny Benson, to be followed by Anna Hagenberger.
Good evening, school board. Thank you for hearing us this evening. My name's Jenny Benson. I have three children over at Willard Elementary School, and I'm the PTA president over there. And I just came to speak on behalf of our school counselors as well, and to say thank you for the changes that you're making to ensure that we can have someone full-time at every school. And I speak as a parent who has benefited from that personally. We have a wonderful school counselor who is full-time, five days a week, over at Willard. And I know from watching her work that she wears a lot of hats. She provides supports for families in need. She helps our teachers with classroom management. She helps our students with their academic struggles and with mental health struggles. Two of my children have received a lot of help from her in the past couple of years. We have one child who struggles with a lot of anxiety, who Ms. Lee has met with to help her just find some strategies to be able to be okay in the classroom when things are chaotic and hard. We have another child who struggled when my father-in-law passed away a year ago, and her struggles with grief made it really hard for her to be at school. And so Ms. Lee met with her a couple weeks in a row, just to read books with her and to listen to her. And I really believe that if it hadn't been for Ms. Lee's consistent presence with her and with my other child who struggles, I think that the last school year would have been really, really difficult for her. Ms. Lee, also, she was one of the top 10 finalists for school of the year. She is really well-respected in our school and advocates for teachers, for parents, for the students. And so she is an indispensable resource for our school. So thank you for the work that you're doing to try to ensure that teachers, that counselors like Ms. Lee can stay in our schools. There's such a need for our teachers and for our families. Our counselors need that consistent presence every single day to build trust with our students, to build trust with the parents, to build trust with the administrators. So I speak on behalf of her and all of our counselors to ask that you continue to allocate those resources and perhaps even more, so that we can have more mental health care for our students.
Good evening. My name's Anna Hagenberger. I'm sure a lot of you have received emails from me already. I have two daughters in Norfolk Public Schools. One is in the pre-med health and engineering program at Blair, and the other is soon to be hopefully getting into the pre-med health and engineering program at Blair. We live in the Bayview area, so we are out of zone for Blair Middle School. And we are suggesting a bus, or buses, be sent to these kids who are in this program who are not in-zone, so that we know that they are safely getting to school and that we are able to do our jobs without having to worry about how are we going to get them to school? You know, luckily, we have had other parents who we've been able to carpool with, but it's still a stress. It's a stress for us, it's a stress for the kids. Through this program, she's in seventh grade, my daughter Victoria's in seventh grade. She's taken the PSATs, gotten a 1080 on it. She's taken the SATs in May. She's gotten straight A's every single year. She has, she's, she's doing great. And if I have to send her to her zone school just because I cannot get her anywhere, she's going to fall behind. And, you know, these programs are great for these kids, but we need to help them get there. I know this originally started without transportation because it was only for Blair students. When you change it to an all-school-wide program, we need to get those kids there. You know? And I don't want to stop my children from doing anything after school because they can't get home. I've had to, you know, she may have wanted to do debate or forensics, and she can't because I can't pick her up. I need a bus to, you know, bring her home after school. My youngest daughter, she wants to do Salem, Naughton, and Gis. I don't know if she's going to be able to get home because, you know, the buses, they say there's a bus to bring them home, but it's not her zone school. If she goes to Blair, takes the bus to Salem, Naughton, and Gis, is she going to be there? Do I have to go, where, where am I going to pick her up? I don't know. So I, I know you guys have been working on it. I've been emailing you for two years. I will email you for four more years if I have to. So please, if we can get buses for these specialty programs so that more kids can go to them. I know a lot of parents have not even applied because there's no bus. So we need to get more kids in these schools, and we need to get the buses to take them to and from. So thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Anna White, to be followed by Christine Riddell.
Dear Dr. Boone, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Jordan, and members of the school board, thank you for giving me a chance to speak tonight. I'm Mary Anna White, a longtime teacher with MPS and an officer in the EAN. I'm in, coming here tonight to ask you to fund the schools fully. With Philip Hawkins, I'm now asking for an 8% raise for all MPS staff, teachers, administrators, and classified staff. It matters how we treat people. We need to fund counseling properly, and now I hear that you are shifting counselors. I'd be interested to see where you're shifting them from. I wholeheartedly agree that we need to have one in every elementary school, but I know at Granby, we've got 2,000-some kids, and sometimes we get treated like other schools that have fewer kids, and we need plenty of people there, too. So I'm just changing that since. We adults need to show the kids that they are our priority, and their families are as well. We need to help students to grow up to be resilient, as well as academically trained for the world of work and college. I'm asking that the city council raise taxes for our schools, and I will be talking to the city council about that as well. We need to invest in them fully. We need to invest in our teachers and support staff. When teachers are asked to substitute for each other on a regular basis because there's not enough money to pay substitutes, then teachers cannot prepare properly for their own kids. When students are in overcrowded classes year after year, then we cannot support them properly and train them to be the best that they can be. We need to fund every school properly. We find extra funding for specialty programs, and that is extremely important because we are preparing a diverse group of students for many different, different leadership skills. We need to be sure that we are funding the schools which have more kids struggling as well. Every student, every student, needs appropriate support in reading, writing, and math skills. That means we need teachers' aids in first grade. We need composition classes that have fewer students, and classes that are grouped according to ability to meet their particular needs, both in writing and in math. needs, both in writing and in math. We need more funding for foreign language classes that help students understand the whole world better, and also their own community. In foreign language classes, we help students understand that American culture is just part of the larger continuum, and we also help students understand how our language skills and how our experiences shape our future. We value every student in our schools. Is our budget reflecting that goal? What are we prioritizing in our city as a whole, our people or our profits? I'm asking you to put our people first, put students and their families first by paying teachers and staff well to attract and retain strong educators. Fund positions that support the whole child. Every person in our community is important. Please ask for full funding for the schools and show the community that our public schools, our kids, and their families are a priority in this city. Thank you so much.
Evening, School Board members. My name is Christine Riddell, and I am WH Taylor's PTA president for the current year. In light of my emails earlier with Ms. Gabriel, she informed me that you guys did move forward with changing your budget proposal for shifting towards full-time counselor in every school. And I hope that means full-time, five days a week for every elementary school because the amount of work that Ms. Guest puts into our children at school is amazing, and I think that you guys really need to think about the other schools like Granby Elementary, who have a lot more children and doing the 250 for 500, for the 500. So, I'm glad to see that you guys have moved forward with trying to shift the budget towards providing all that because in light of the shooting yesterday, that's so close to home, friend of ours, that's her alma mater, so it's just a really, I think it's a very important thing that you guys, and to do, to change it, to shift it towards the budget that you guys have done. So, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Danielle Norris to be followed by Sarah Burrhop.
Hello, I'm the PTA Vice President at WH Taylor. I was also here to speak on behalf of Mrs. Guest and all of the counselors. Also thrilled to hear that we'll hopefully all have full-time counselors. I know personally, my son, two years ago, could barely walk into school. If not for Mrs. Guest, we'd still be there. She still meets with him all the time, and it's been a wonderful help to us, and I just want every student in Norfolk to have that. And I just think that, at least in our neighborhood, I live in West Kent, and a lot of students in our neighborhood are leaving Norfolk Public Schools, and I just think we have to do whatever we can to keep our schools, you know, running as best we can to keep people, and otherwise it's just going to, we're going to lose more and more people. So, I guess thank you for the counselors, and hopefully we can see Mrs. Guest five days a week next year. Thank you.
Good evening, School Board members. Nice to see some familiar faces up there. My name is Sarah Burrhop. I am a parent at WH Taylor. I have two students there. Next year, I will have one at Taylor and one at Blair. I'm also here to lend my voice to the request that Norfolk Public Schools employ school counselors full-time. They are invaluable. I know that personally, but also just, we live in really uncertain and anxiety-producing times, and it is impossible to shield our children from that. I think that what school counselors provide that no one else can is consistency and competency. They are the only ones in the building who have specialized training to deal with anxiety and any number of manifestations of mental hardships that kids deal with. My daughter has anxiety issues, and Ms. Guest also makes it so that she can come to school now. So, thank you very much for changing the way that you were thinking about how to budget for school counselors. There is no way that we can be successful without full-time counselors.
Next, we have Ennis Foster to be followed by Michael, Michaela, and Jana.
Good evening. My name is Ennis Foster. I'm in 4th grade at WH Taylor. My counselor is Ms. Guest. I have seen Ms. Guest for many reasons. She'll help me learn bad things, and it happened, happened are not my fault. She helps me choose good friends, and she helps when kids made fun of me for my learning differences. I feel safe talking to her, and I would like her to always stay around for me. I think Ms. Guest and I need, I love Ms. Guest. I need her. Please keep her at my school full-time. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Boone, Ms. Jordan, Vice President Gabriella, and members to the School Board. My name is Michaela.
My name is Michelle.
My name is Jana.
Our problem is with bugs, mice, ants, roaches, and spiders in classrooms, gyms, and cafeterias, and all places around. It's not healthy.
What our solution is for the kids, we need them to help clean up and do better.
And the second solution is requesting that as soon as possible, we would like your money to, wait, use some of your money to get rid of the school and some of the pests. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ricky Ross to be followed by Shirley Reader.
Good evening. My name is Ricky Ross, and tonight I'm here representing the Norfolk Commission for Persons with Disabilities. The Norfolk Commission for Persons with Disabilities asks why dollars that are slated to special education are earmarked to contracted vendors before students are slated for placement. We question why Norfolk has exclusive contracts, ignoring qualified vendors for specific circumstances, such as working with kids with autism, and Norfolk is the only city that has these exclusive contracts. Our commission recommends that the budget set aside money and disperse when and where are needed. We feel that the state private day placement funds awarded to contracted city vendors may influence the decisions made in IEP meetings. Furthermore, we feel that money is wasted by the guaranteed slots in the selected private day placements, and these exclusive contracts waste money. The Norfolk Commission of Persons with Disabilities knows there is a problem also with communication between the School Board and families with students who are disabled. We also know that negotiating the system requires more than a doctorate degree. Our commission recommends that there be funding set aside for a position whose sole purpose is to create communication connections, dialogue, and interaction between parents whose children are in special education, the School Board, and CIAC. We know other districts have neutral parent resource centers with a person employed to assist parents in navigating, that is, the educational and special education process, who will attend meetings to assist parents and provide them with educational materials and referrals to other agencies. We suggest a resource center and an assistant that will be independent of pressure by the school district. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, good evening, Board. Rodney and Dr. Boone. I'm Shirley Confino, the Chair of the Commission for Persons with Disabilities of Norfolk. Our commission scheduled three meetings with candidates for the School Board and City Council. Two of the meetings were held, and so far, and we're expecting to a third one in April. I'm going to outline the concerns, all the candidates we met, as they pertain to your budget. Number one, the short time allotted to the concerned public, who includes teachers, students, our commission, and the public at large, to read the full document, research it, and create timely, concrete comments to you, the School Board. Number two, the lack of inclusion of a dream budget that the City Council might be able to consider to strive for, but only included the submission for a bare-bones budget, that does not include certified instructors, at least one board-certified behavioral analyst for children who require it, the addition of alternative schools that would offer free and inclusive classrooms with children with disabilities rather than the one that is contracted, advocates for parents with children who are disabled, who would be able to offer information, resources, and guidance while they struggle to gain their children an education that will prepare them for life, and does not include an allowance for technology adaptations for students with disabilities. Thirdly, and finally, I and my commission for Persons with Disabilities would like to know how our statements tonight and the statements made last year, or last week, by at least 25 other interested organizations at the Southside STEM Academy at Capicello will be incorporated in your budget. Do you still have, do you have time to change it? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Helen Nelson Brown to be followed by Carter Mellon.
Evening, members of the School Board. Dr. Boone, my name is Helen Brown. I live in Norfolk. I've had two children through the system. I was a special education many, many years ago, and I now work with the Norfolk Commission for Persons with Disabilities. The Norfolk Commission for Persons with Disabilities questions why the city attorney represents the city and the families of children with disabilities. The city attorney's office seems, is averse to the parents because they represent the school district against the parents of students in special education, injury lawsuits, and teacher injury to children. Our commission recommends that in your coming budget, I understand that you, as members of the School Board, have acquired special counseling from a private attorney to deal with some of the problems that you have had with dealing with the city attorney's office. We would like to see, I know you mentioned $50,000 has been saved. I don't know if that's for you all to use or for parents of children who have problems and cannot get the services necessary from the Department of Special Education. We would like to see an attorney that does not represent the city, has nothing to do with the city attorney's office, to be able to work with the parents, with the students, with the parents' lawyers, and advocates for the children with disabilities. The Norfolk Commission for Persons with Disabilities understands that the last five-year special performance reports for our Norfolk Schools shows our students have not met the standards set by the state or federal government. This has harmed and is harming all the children in the district, especially the ones with special education needs. We know that Norfolk Public Schools is currently undergoing an extensive onsite, multi-site compliance audit conducted by a large team of VDOE specialists. Our commission recommends that money be budgeted for certified behavioral specialist, Wilson reading certified instructors, as well as general and specialized educators who will help provide services needed, which Dr. Boone said was part of her mission. This will improve special performance reports for next year and beyond. Our understanding is that parents who live in Norfolk and can afford choose private schools because of the low performance of the public schools. We think that improving our schools will improve people staying in Norfolk, especially we have the largest military base in Norfolk, and we'd like to see those people live in Norfolk, not go to another system. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carter Moline. I'm the parent of a 14-year-old child with autism. I am here tonight to make public comment about next year's budget in regards to behavioral funding. It is my belief, based on personal experience, that there are four core problems in the Special Education Department that should be addressed immediately in this year's budget. They are as follows. Number one, there is a pressing need for in-school suspension budgeting for children with behavioral disabilities. Funding this will teach children to cope with problems. Not funding this will teach children that they have somehow failed. Number two, there is a pressing need to immediately add at minimum one board-certified behavioral analyst to the Special Education Department. Doing so will provide the district with proper functional behavioral assessments and behavioral intervention plans. In addition, it would make a qualified professional available to all faculty and staff in the district, providing a level of support that has been absent for years. This action should facilitate the retention of difficult students to placements within the district. Number three, there is a pressing need for the addition of a staff member who will work with parents of children with disabilities to organize interaction and community. While I am encouraged to see that the CIAC is becoming more active, I am still very concerned that there is no parental community in Norfolk for the parents of children with IEPs in the public schools. The diverse people of this city will not be able to substantially contribute to the improvement of the district without such organization. Number four, there is a pressing need for the district to hire legal counsel that is not affiliated with the city attorney's office and is paid for out of the district budget at an hourly rate. If this action is taken, there will be real and significant financial pressure on the IEP teams to resolve disputes with parents rather than to prolong these problems. As I am currently aware of four Norfolk children with IEPs who are represented by private attorneys, I believe this issue is much more significant than the School Board is willing to acknowledge. I thank you for your time, and please remember that parents who hire advocates and attorneys do not have a free, appropriate public education for their child. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. James Jarman Jr.
Afternoon, Board. I'm James Jarman Jr. I reside at 5503 Barn Hollow, 723 Montclair, 2549 Vincent Avenue, 1726 Barad Avenue, wherever I need to be. Okay. The day I visited the Southside STEM Academy, and I had the pleasure of observing two uniform officers making their rounds, and that was a pleasant surprise to me because I'm in fear of my son every day he's at that school. I got some suggestions for the budget again, and I would like to point out that the budget is pretty much a cookie jar. There's only so many cookies in it. So, I'm not going to ask you for money, as everybody else has, just like they do city council. But I will ask you to redirect and re- But I will ask you to redirect and reappropriate some things, and I have some suggestions along the way. I was reading a brochure, and it says in part, in a digested version, "This program incorporates problem- and project-based learning, with special emphasis on the areas of engineering. Additional emphasis in the program is designed to increase early students' values and awareness in areas of STEM (science, technology, engineering, and mathematics)." Now, I hate to go in front of doctors and PhDs, but where that? I read another brochure. "Academy of Performing Arts provides students in-depth exposure to arts, dance, arts, visual, vocal, theater, instrumental, multimedia through rigorous challenging curriculum that will meet the academic leadership and artistic needs of high school students." I was, where that school at? But we was talking about Bogota. So my first suggestion is, let's take some of this advertising money, not throwing shade, propaganda money, and place it in the schools and the former counselors, and monitors, and officers, and it'll be better spent. Because when you got a cookie jar, and it only had so many cookies, we rely on the wisdom of the school board and council to spend those cookies and get the most bang for the buck. Same thing I would have to do in my household. The other suggestion I have is, I saw two uniform Norfolk officers. We also have a sheriff department. Get them to sit on the school grounds and fill their reports out and those types of things, so they all read on the school ground if we have incidents, and their presence can serve as a deterrent to some of the underpaid school teachers. Instead of hiring a bus monitor, maybe get them the job of being a teacher till 2:30 and a bus monitor after school, so they had a supplemental income, and we can retain some of our seasoned salt. I leave you with this. The Bible teaches us that we are pretty much infidels if we do not leave our children an inheritance. The mortal too might think that's money. I would submit to you, let's leave them a quality education. Let's leave them graduation from an accredited school in Norfolk. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our list of speakers.
All right, we thank you for your comments. Going to bring this portion of the meeting, this public hearing, to a close, and then we will proceed with our regularly scheduled meeting. So maybe I'll just, I'll do it in a form of motion, have a motion for us to close the public hearing?
Okay.
Further discussion? Hold on, may. Was there someone that was trying to speak for the budget public hearing? Mr. Butts, do we have someone that was trying to?
I think she signed the wrong form, so she wants to try to speak now. I'll give her name for you.
For the budget public hearing?
Yes.
So we do have Ms. Tisha Jordan.
Just keep, give me one moment, please. So I'd like to reopen. We're in the process of, so if you would resend. Thank you. And Ms. Doyle.
I'll resend my second.
All right, thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Mr. Jordan and school board members. My name is Tisha Jordan. I'm a mother of a student at Larry Moore Elementary School. I'm also a parent volunteer. I'm also the PTA president at Larry Moore Elementary School, and I had the opportunity to review the proposed budget for the upcoming year, and I just wanted to give you some of my suggestions, the things that I hope that you can consider for the upcoming budget. Increase security for all schools. I believe that the high schools and middle schools all have a full-time police officer, but we should add all schools with all the things going on in the world, and just had a recent shooting in Maryland, that we should have all schools, including elementary schools, with a full-time police officer. Increasing in funding for facilities. We all know the challenges that's going on with our aging schools, and based on the facility report that was done this year, Larry Moore Elementary School was one of those schools that scored very poorly because of the damaged roof and moisture damage on the walls and the ceilings, as well as insects and rodents. This is a safety issue, and I would like to see more detailed information in the budget, which lists the plan and exactly how the money will be used versus just a lump sum of money being used, versus just a lump sum of money that was listed on the budget, just getting more details of where the money's going to be allocated. We need more than the percentage in the budget to our teachers, to attract, reward, and retain teachers, and making sure that the budget has funds for all schools to have a full-time reading, math, and gifted teacher. With schools who are not fully accredited and students not learning at grade level, this is very important that we, this is very important if we want our children to have choices and excel in the global world. I tell my son every day to aim high and strive for excellence, and I ask that we, ask city council, for more what is listed in the proposed budget, to make sure all of our children in the district receive quality, top-notch education. Thank you for your time and effort in putting the proposed budget together, and I do plan to be at the city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And there are other speakers also that signed the different forms, so. Mr. Butts?
So next we have Ms. Lakeisha Owens, to be followed by Ms. Kellum.
My name's Lakeisha Owens, and I am a third-grade teacher at J Cox Elementary School. I am in my sixth year teaching at J Cox. I've taught nowhere else but Norfolk Public Schools and J Cox Elementary, and I don't wish to teach anywhere else because I have a love and a passion for my scholars there. I am the head of our Student Council Association, which we, we're in our third year, and I am the one who started it at our school. I came here tonight because I wanted to express my frustration with my fellow, that my fellow teachers have and the students have at J Cox. We are in a great need, in a dire need. I feel as though I could stand here all night and give you a laundry list of things that we need from you, but that's why I brought my students here, to have you hear from them, and hopefully that you will hear, not just hear me, but you will hear them. They're being cheated right now of a quality education. You know, I sit in my classroom and I teach, and I pour my heart into everything I do, but the inability to teach because we have so much need, as far as mental need and mental health, in our classrooms, it's very, very difficult to give those students that are there to sit and learn that quality education. We just feel as though we're forgotten. We feel as though J Cox Elementary, we're sitting there, but nobody sees us, nobody hears us. We go places, and nobody even knows we're there, you know? School after school after school is being called, is being recognized, nobody hears us, and all my kids look around and, "Ms. Owens, they didn't say us." How does that make me feel as a teacher? How does that make them feel as a student, when they don't feel anybody believes in them, that nobody sees them? And we're a priority school. I don't feel like we're a priority, and I've been there six years, I've never felt like we're a priority. And things right now are going downhill. They've gone downhill since I started, and they're going even farther downhill every single year, and we're tired. Our teachers are tired, we're emotionally tired, we're physically tired, we're psychologically tired, and I love my school, and I don't want to go, but I know my mental health is more important than anything in this world. I have three children of my own, and they need me, and it breaks my heart to think that I can't be there for the kids at J Cox Elementary School because I can't do it anymore. And I need your help, my children need your help, and I'm here to fight for them, and I will fight for them, and I want to know that you hear our cries, you're listening to our cries, their cries, my, our cries, and I'm just hoping that something, anything can be done. Come in our classrooms, come see our students, come talk to us. Nobody does it. Nobody. Thank you from us at J Cox Elementary.
My name is Amari Kellum, and I am a third-grade student at J Cox Elementary School. I am here to tell you what we need at J Cox Elementary School. We need, we, we need a lot of help. J Cox need a lot of things. We need extra teachers. Our teachers are tired and need assistance. We need police officers. The school has a lot of fights that us from, keep us from learning. I want to learn, I need to learn. I want to pass my SOL. That would be good for J Cox, but we need our help, please, for us. We need you, thank you from J Cox Elementary SCA.
Next we have Shania Whitley, to be followed by Amani Whitley.
My name is Shiani Whitley, and I am a third-grade student at J Cox Elementary School. I am here to tell you that J Cox Elementary needs to be recognized. On one field trip, we went to an orchestra concert, and they were calling Norfolk Public Schools to be dismissed, and didn't call J Cox Elementary School. We just sat there waiting for our name to be called. We were forgotten. We are tired of being forgotten. Thank you from J Cox SCA.
Good evening. My name is Amani Whitley, and I am a third-grade student at J Cox Elementary School. I am here to express all the things that I think our school needs. We really need a new school. This one is getting really old. I see how other schools are getting rebuilt, and our school is still the same. We have leaking ceilings. This is ruining books and papers in our classrooms. The restrooms are another problem, and the restrooms, you see people are throwing spitballs, and we need new ceilings and sinks. Last, the toilets in the restroom need to be replaced. We deserve better than what we are getting. Can you help us? Will you help us? Thank you from J Cox Elementary School SCA.
Next we have Tion Powell, to be followed by Jakita Martin.
My name is Tion Powell, and I am a fourth grader at J Cox Elementary School. We need your help to make my school a better place. Norfolk Public Schools is falling, is failing our students. They aren't giving us what we need to be successful. We need more counselors to help with behavior. This is the number-one reason teachers have trouble teaching. We cannot learn, we can't, we cannot learn what we want to learn, we need to learn. Please hear our words. Thank you from J Cox SCA.
Good evening. My name is Jakita Martin, and I'm a third-grade student at J Cox Elementary School. I am here to express what we need for a better school. We do need help. We were at the orchestra, and we were, never got called. We have a leaking ceiling that's in room 34 and 26 that need fixed, fixing up. It was ruining our books and our papers, and we need a better school. Thank you from J Cox Elementary School SCA.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that is our last speaker. Based on this list. Thank you, and appreciate that we got those speakers in. So now, I'd like to bring the public hearing to a close, have a motion to do so. Ms. Jordan, I move that, that we make a motion to close the public hearing. Have a second?
Second.
Moved by Reverend Haywood, second by Mrs. Doyle. Any further discussion regarding the public hearing closing? Hearing none. Mr. Banks, if you call the role. Sorry. Got it on, on routine. Mr. Butts, if you would call the role, please. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. All right, we are going to, sir? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. We're going to continue on with our regular business meeting at this time, and so next up on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Boone?
Good evening, Mr. Jordan, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. This is our opportunity monthly to showcase a lot of the great things that are going on in Norfolk Public Schools, and we wish we could capture everything, but certainly each month, Channel 47 and the Communications Department put together a fine example of the things that are going on in our schools, and we're very proud of our students, our teachers, our administrators, and our staff for this. So I'd like to ask Channel 47 to share this month's video.
This year, Read Across America Day seemed more like Read Across America Week, as schools around the district celebrated Dr. Seuss's birthday with a variety of activities. Early in the week, sailors from the USS Abraham Lincoln visited several schools, including St. Helena Elementary, and spent time in classrooms reading to some of our youngest students. The goal was to provide community outreach and support, but the enthusiasm of these pre-K and kindergarten students made this experience a memorable one for the sailors.
It was awesome. I haven't had this much fun in a long time. I mean, I love being on the ship, but this was, this was a lot of fun, and these are a good bunch of kids. It's really cool to see some of these schools out here. You know, we're from all over the United States, we have some sailors from all over the world, and we have about 700 sailors participating today in 79 different schools, all through the tidewater area, so it's really nice for them to come out here and to see the community that we're a part of.
The kids that I had, they were very energetic. They repeated everything I said, they knew most of the letters, and they had, they went outside the box here, as I called it, and came up with their own words that began with, other than what was in the book. And then, of course, I read another book with them, and we acted out something, jumping, climbing, you know, pretended we're running, and I thought it was very, you know, they're energetic and they're eager, but more importantly is, you know, at the end, they actually came over and gave me a hug, and said, "Thank you for showing up." So I thought it was awesome.
Dr. Seuss was on the loose at Camp Young. Multiple readers from school administration and Dominion Energy ventured out to the camp to read to students and provide them with some valuable gifts.
They were great. I mean, they were very engaging, they had a lot of questions, and they were very attentive in listening to the books and the reading. We look to support the communities that we serve, so today, we've actually come and brought books as well to read to the children, and they'll be able to take the books home as well, to read them to their family, to continue the initiative.
It brings a spirit of excitement. The kids love that someone takes the time to come out. Uh, the kids love that someone takes the time to come out to do things and partner with us, to do things for them. And it's always good for kids to know that the adults love reading. And we hoping that it will inspire them to become great readers also.
On March second, the birthday of Dr. Seuss, schools were filled with readers from the community, city and school system. Students enjoyed the opportunity to have some new faces read to them. And every reader came ready to share their love of reading.
Well, I think it shows that not only our love for reading, but it also shows engagement with the children. It shows that we can all come together and take a story and engage and enjoy whatever that story might have as a lesson. But also it gets us to, to understand that as a city, we can unite through books, we can unite through community engagement. So it's just another opportunity to do that.
Well, it's good that children see how important reading is and the different opportunities that are afforded to them just by reading in a book. You can go so many places in a book that you may not be able to go in real life. And so it's a really, it's a good adventure.
Well, for Norfolk, in our redesign work and our theory of action, we, we're focusing on four areas. Leadership, literacy, rigor and innovation. And this is a direct link to our work around literacy. And so it's important for students to know as adults, we value reading every day and how it's a gateway to the rest of great things in life.
Crossroads School was the site of a major celebration as students were rewarded for winning the Read with MEAC contest. After an energetic dance party with members from the various MEAC schools, Crossroads was presented with their winning check for two thousand dollars. And the top individual readers at the school were recognized. This program is special not only to Norfolk Public Schools, but also to the MEAC and Town Bank, the sponsor of the competition.
The bank does a lot in the community, giving away more than five million dollars a year to community activities within the, within the Hampton Roads community. But the Read with the MEAC is one of our favorites. We sign all of the certificates and we make the certificates for all of the kids. And we're really just glad to encourage them to do the best they can.
It's really exciting. You know, this partnership with the MEAC has been longstanding since they've been having the tournament in the city. And it shows their commitment to the community and giving back. When you talk about celebrating the accomplishments the kids make with reading and literacy is phenomenal.
I want to commend Crossroads. The principal here uh, done a magnificent job of engaging their students in reading. And Superintendent Boone has always been supportive of our project of engaging with the community. And one final point, want students to know that when you achieve academically, you can be recognized as well. And that's really what it's all about.
During the MEAC tournament, juniors and seniors from around the district got an exclusive look into the historically black college and university experience at the MEAC College Fair at Norfolk Scope. Thirteen colleges and universities from the Mideastern Athletic Conference, as well as representatives from the military and City of Norfolk, were on hand to inform students about opportunities after graduation. Students learned about different majors the schools had to offer. And they could even receive onsite admission.
I think it's a great opportunity because most students don't have colleges at their fingertips. So when we have, when we come on a field trip, we basically having to palm my hands up. We got our transfer that I got and scouts are always give us. So it's, it's better than going online. You gotta wait two, three weeks for the certificate.
Well, I think the college experience is important for everybody, you know, just to get the experience. I know it might not be for everybody, but you should at least try, you know, you get to meet new people, experience new things, especially the HBCU experience.
Um, I feel like NPS holds, um, a lot of African Americans that don't get the opportunity that other schools get. So, um, I feel like MEAC hosts a lot of HBCUs that have a great opportunity for people that, you know, need the opportunity. They haven't been accepted or they haven't been even applied. Yeah, this is a great opportunity for NPS.
Norfolk's mayor, school board chair and vice chair visited Taylor Elementary's Student Council Association and spoke with them about the importance of leadership and giving back to the community. These distinguished guests gave a thorough explanation of their backgrounds before answering a variety of tough questions from these bright students.
It was great. They had outstanding questions. They were obviously prepared. I love to see the young people engage in student council and student government. I mean, obviously they're going to be part of our future political leaders. And so it's just great to see that what they're doing here at Taylor, Taylor Elementary School, preparing these young people to understand how government works and really to, uh, to make sure that our country lives up to the ideals that we say that, that we believe.
Well, hey, I'm a student of Norfolk Public Schools, uh, product, very proud product of Norfolk Public Schools. And uh, someone, um, always came out to speak to my, uh, my class as well as to the various organizations. And it was leaders. Uh, it was leaders that inspired me. Um, and so I think it's fitting for Rodney, myself and Dr. Gabriel to be here uh, at Taylor to give back our stories, uh, our lived experiences to these young scholars.
It was amazing. Um, it was a great experience to have that happen. I learned a lot from the questions that other people asked. I thought it was nice that they could take time about theirs, out of their schedules to come and that they answered the questions honestly and how they thought it would be. And they treated us like we were older than we were.
Miguel Merritt, a fifth grader at the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, was the champion of this year's Math twenty-four challenge. Miguel was the most proficient at coming up with the equations that equal twenty-four derived from the cards in play. This exciting competition not only develops students' critical mathematic thinking skills, but it also enables them to use math in a fun way while meeting new friends with similar interests. Students at Larchmont Elementary took part in a special performance during Black History Month. The program, which was written by Larchmont's Assistant Principal, Dion Crisco, was a timeline of African-American history from the first arrival in sixteen nineteen to the election of President Barack Obama. It also showcased the important role African-American women have played throughout history.
I've always had this thing where we know about Martin Luther King and we know about Jackie Robinson. We know those figures in African-American history, but there are a lot of figures that we don't know about. There's a lot of current figures in African-American history that we don't know about. And so I want to expose the children to it. I want to expose their parents to it. There's no reason not to know African-American history in its fullest.
For more news stories and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNS TV forty-seven or the NPS website.
Bring smiles to our faces, the dedication of our teachers, our administrators, and the commitment of the community to support us in our redesign efforts for greater success. So we're very proud of all this going on. We know we have a lot more to do, but we can certainly say we are making progress at this point. So thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. That concludes the superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Boone. Uh, we also have, coming up in the month of April, uh, several observances. Mr. Butts, would you like to share those with us, please?
Certainly. For the month of April, we have four observances. The first being School Library Month. School Library Month is the American Association of School Librarians' celebration of school librarians and their programs. Every April, school librarians are encouraged to host activities to help their school and local community, community celebrate the essential role that strong school library programs play in transforming learning. The twenty eighteen theme is Making Connections at Your School Library. Public Schools Volunteer Week. Public School Volunteer Week is April sixteenth through the twentieth and provides a yearly opportunity for schools and families to honor and highlight the powerful contributions parents and caregivers give and provide to schools as well as at home to support student success. Administrative Professionals Week. Each year, administrative professionals are recognized for their skills and loyalty, attributes every office depends upon. Administrative Professionals Week celebrates and sheds light on, on those professionals' devoted, valued work. It'll be recognized April twenty-second through the twenty-eighth. And then lastly, we have National Student Leadership Week. Student leaders make significant contributions to the climate and culture of their schools and communities. And it's important to celebrate that. National Student Leadership Week, NSLW, is an annual theme-based week dedicated to recognizing and supporting the vital role of student leaders. Since nineteen seventy-two, the National Office of National Honor Society, National Junior Honor Society and National Student Council has sponsored this week. In twenty eighteen, it's being celebrated April fifteenth through the twenty-first with the theme, Make Your Mark on the World: Dream, Lead, Serve. This theme is rooted in a massive student leadership initiative on global citizenship, which was, um, has been underway since twenty sixteen. Mr. Jordan, that concludes our observances.
Thank you, Mr. Butts. All right, next on our agenda, um, citizens' comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Again, we ask that you would, uh, uh, focus those comments on other portions of the agenda or something that's non-budget since we just had our, uh, latest budget public hearing. Uh, as you can see, you can come to the podium and the podium will adjust to your height. So, uh, feel free to do that. Uh, we ask again, if you just state your name, whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools or if you're employed by the system. Uh, state your position, give any facts and other relevant data you may have. If you represent a group or organization, you may ask those individuals to rise. And you may give any written statements or supporting materials to the clerk for the record. Uh, as with the earlier public hearing, uh, your comments are limited to three minutes. And so we ask that you do so. And if at some point in time the bell goes off, we just ask that you quickly uh, summarize and close your comments so that we may provide time for others as well. Uh, with that, uh, Mr. Butts? Matter of fact, one moment, please. Uh, Andrew, would you like to, uh, since Arturo is not with us, would you like to join us on the podium? You can bring your nameplate. Andrew is our alternate, uh, student school board rep. And so we will invite him up to join us. Okay. With that, uh, Mr. Butts?
It appears we have three speakers for this portion. The first being Julia Fink to be followed by Diane Outlaw. If we don't have Julia Fink, we can go with, um, Diane Outlaw, please, to be followed by Jasmine Sanderlin.
Diane Outlaw, uh, media person at Little Creek Elementary School, twenty-three-year employee, Norfolk Public School. I just want to say thank you for video. We had a wonderful time this year for Read Across America. I have thank you letters to Dr. Gabriel and Ms. Bassin from the students at Little Creek. And whether tonight I be the Lorax, we do it for the children. We do it for the children. Or whether I be Dorothy and click my heels and say fourteen-two, fourteen-two, better achievement. That's right.
All right.
Thank you for coming out. They enjoyed you.
Thank you.
How y'all doing? My name is Jasmine Sanderlin and I am a volunteer in a parent of a child that attends PB Young Senior Elementary School. My concern is our teachers. They welcome me in as family. I consider them as a aunt, an uncle, my brother, my sister. I have a question for you guys and I need you to answer it. Who is above PB Young Senior Elementary School? As, as far as district-wise?
Continue with.
Okay. Um, well, last week, while all the other kids were getting progress reports and allowing their parents to see how they're progressing in school, our kids didn't due to them not receiving it from downtown. Okay. When it comes to our kids, I am, my child knows that you go to school, you're a product of me. Your staff is a part of you. They work all day, every day with our kids. I see them, oh my gosh. I'm a hands-on, like I said, I'm a hands-on parent with my child. So I volunteer majority, fifty percent off a week. Even though I work at night, I still making my point to go to their school and I volunteer. I see the blood, sweat and tears pouring into these kids. I want to cry. I want to cry because I'm crying for these kids. Now, Ms. Boone, I seen your, your, um, video. I didn't see PB Young. I never see PB Young. I feel as though they're left out because we're in a poor neighborhood. And I think, I don't think that I should feel this way because I am a product of Norfolk Public Schools. I graduated from Bogota T. Washington High School in two thousand nine with Cynthia Watson and played at. So with that being said, I need, I need, we need help. Not only do we need help for our kids. I know we don't have a lot of parents that's going to speak up for our kids, but I refuse to let this go any longer. We need, how can, we need y'all to back up our teachers so our teacher can back up our parents. Because if we don't, I refuse for one of our kids to be like that Bogota T. Washington High School student. And my, my heart goes out to that family. And I'm sorry I had to use that as a gimmick, but we can't, not today. My saints, here I had to beg him. I had, um, McDonald's. But we, we, we had to get this together for, not only for us. Like I said, the teachers are a product of you and they're trying their best. So I just want y'all to try y'all best to help them out, especially Dr. White. Excuse me. I know that lady. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that was our final speaker.
Okay. Was there anyone else that may have gotten, uh, mixed up in terms of the, the two signup sheets? They wanted to address the board on the agenda and non-agenda item. All right. Hearing none, we will proceed with our meeting. Uh, next on the agenda, we have the approval of the consent agenda. Is there any item that any member would like to have considered separately from the consent agenda at this time? Uh, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Ms. Doyle, seconded by Reverend Haywood. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Butts?
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood? Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner? Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Uh, next up, we have a, uh, discussion of the adoption of the proposed twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen academic calendar. Uh, Dr. Boone?
Thank you. The, um, proposed calendar has been provided to the board. And just as a reminder of process, we've worked with the calendar for, um, several months now. And we've also had, we also extended the time for staff to have input on the, on the next year's calendar, particularly in, in January due to the, uh, number of inclement weather days that we had. And so the calendar looks very similar to this year's calendar. We were fortunate that we planned for, uh, six makeup days in the calendar. We're one of the few districts, not the only district, that will do some fall days, um, makeup days in the event that we have impacts from hurricanes or flooding. This year, we were able to use two of those three days in the second half of the school year, starting in January when we had the snow days. So we found ourselves at this point of only having to, we use one day, a half day, March second as a makeup day. We took, uh, one of our two workdays and professional development days at the end of January. And then we use, utilize President's Day. So at this point, we've not had to extend the length of the school day and, uh, do any of that. So this calendar runs a very similar process and, and you see those details. We're also a very, uh, participate in the regional calendar committee. And as school districts talk about how we have our calendars aligned, so we, we do that also. And I'd like to thank, um, Ms. Deb Rock and, uh, Dr. Rogers and those in Academic Affairs for leading the work on the academic calendar. Ms. Rock is here tonight. If you have specific questions, but y'all knows that, that perhaps that I know the detailed, uh, answers about. Um, but this is the calendar we will present to the board for consideration.
Uh, to have a motion to, uh, approve the calendar recommendation as presented?
I, I move that, I make a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Second. All right, any, uh, move by Mrs. Doyle, seconded by Reverend Haywood? Discussion, questions for Ms. Rock?
I have a question.
Dr. Robson?
In the past, we've, um, had, uh, comparative calendars and polled the teachers, did we do this, uh, this year? While Ms. Rock is coming, I'll start with part of the answer. Yes, when I was commenting that we extended the opportunity for input onto the, the, uh, various calendars. We did that in January because we had lost days as part, uh, due to the snow. And so we wanted to make sure that the voices were there. But Ms. Rock can certainly share the entire process.
In the beginning, when we had our first committee meeting, um, we discussed that option one, option two, and how it would be best just to try to formulate one good calendar. Because we all... because we all know that the option one, option two worked best when we had two weeks off at Christmas, and we didn't have two weeks off at the Christmas break. So by doing it just with one option, it was easier for people to understand. A lot of times, they have difficulty following the two different formats, so the committee decided that it would be best just to put all of the eggs in one basket. It was all going to work out to be that way anyways, and it pretty much follows the calendar that we had from last year. The unfortunate thing was weather. In the participation in it, we only had 412 participants this year versus 1,600 last year versus 16,000 when we first started doing this in the 2013-14 calendar. So other than posting it online and doing the parent link and extending it, I'm not sure how else to get other participants in this.
Ms. Bassin?
So what do you attribute having that high response rate in 2013-14 versus what we're getting now?
It was something new. It was the novel idea of being able to give the stakeholders an opportunity to voice their opinions on the calendar. The calendar is very set and very driven with the regional calendar. This side of the water, meaning the south side versus the peninsula, they don't have a similar calendar. Their spring break's a different time than our spring break. We have a formula to follow for the spring break. We all have a formula, we start at the same time of the school year. So we try to keep things consistent, so that one city isn't on spring break and another city's not on spring break because of the transient population we have employees. So we try to keep it that, as simple as possible with that.
And also for our regional programs, for example, our Governor's Schools, Governor's School for the Arts, our CSET programs, having consistent calendars then means that students are together in school at the comfortable time on this side of the water.
Yeah. Yeah, that does make sense. So did, as part of planning, were they, was this a regional discussion?
Yes, ma'am. We have a regional committee, and there's a representative from each one of the cities, and we bring our options, our calendars, together, and we kind of look at things and how things are shaking out, and we mirror each other the best that we possibly can, just for the availability of the staffing. The one thing, we get a request from the city for the election day to close our schools, and that's, has been working out very well. And the virtual day, I know, is a teacher's favorite, and it gives them an opportunity to get their grades in. Curriculum and Instruction had an opportunity to put input into the calendar as far as driving the grading periods for pacing. So everyone's kind of had their hand in the pot on how to do the calendar. But we are getting to the year where it's going to be the two weeks off again, so that'll be a popular, that'll be a popular year for the calendar.
Okay.
Ms. Doyle?
I just appreciate that we're getting out a little bit earlier in June, as opposed to having graduations in the third or fourth week. So I appreciate that we're able to do that, and I know that it's attributed to the two, we're not having the two-week in December, but I also think you've been smart about some of these days that you've allocated. So I advocate for these children to get out sooner in June like this, so thank you.
Anything else? All right, you all comfortable with us proceeding?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Butts, if you would, call the roll and the motion, please.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner? Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Next up is item 6.02, monthly financial reports. Dr. Boone?
I'll ask Ms. Ingram to come forward and present this month's financial report.
Good evening, Mr. Jordan, Dr. Gabriel, school board members, Dr. Boone. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the financial statements for the period ended in February 28th, our eighth accounting period. Revenue received as of the end of February was $199.3 million, or 61.3% of the total budget. This compares to 65.5% for the same time period last fiscal year and 61.8% for fiscal year 2016. On the expenditure side, at the end of February, our expenditures were $185.1 million, or 56.9% of our budget. This compares to 58.8% for the same time period last fiscal year and 60.5% for fiscal year 2016. And for the month of February, we had no budget transfers that were greater than $50,000. Are there any questions?
Questions, comments? Dr. Robinson?
Would you attribute the decrease in expense occurrences this year compared to years past?
It's just the timing of expenditures, as to when purchase orders and bills come in.
Okay.
Others? All right, thank you, Ms. Ingram.
I mean, behind that is another rendition of the same thing. And on that, I did explain some of the differences.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the monthly financial reports?
I move that we approve the financial reports as presented.
I have a second.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Wagner. Any further discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, Mr. Butts, if you call the roll?
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Took me a while, yes. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2019 educational plan and budget planning. As we mentioned earlier, we had some conversations earlier today. We have a presentation, but before we go forward, I just wanted to give an opportunity, if anyone has any further considerations for the board at this time. Otherwise, what I'll do is just kind of talk through the work and the presentation, and then we can get a motion and then follow whatever discussion the will of the board is. Dr. Boone, did you want to provide an updated overview for the board and for the public where we are?
Yes, Ms. Ingram and I will piggyback and share on this one. The slide before you represents the budget figure proposed on March 7, 2018, $329,317. Based on the board's conversation this evening, this after, earlier this afternoon in the work session, the board asked us to add to that, to the proposed budget, the health and wellness coordinator, roughly $89,000 for salary and benefits, GPS for buses, roughly $120,000, for $209,000 additional dollars. Therefore, the superintendent's proposed budget to the board now reflects $329,509,17. Those reflect those shifts. Again, the next slide addresses the various revenue sources. You see the state figure in the column in green. Again, as we discussed early and as we discussed last week and the week before, we do not have a state budget. While we've been in the meetings today, we've learned that the Governor, Governor Northam has essentially resubmitted former Governor McCullough's budget for consideration to the General Assembly. They are being called into session on April 11. There are certain assumptions still that are driven, driving the governor's proposed budget, one of those being the adoption of expansion of Medicaid. If you read some of the, had a chance between meetings to look a little bit at some of the commentary, that's still not certain at this point. We based our budget on the governor's proposed budget originally, so the numbers here reflect it there. You will also see the change in what we're asking. Our overall city increase is about 2.6%, and representing 38.8% of the budget. Our federal dollar is another area of uncertainty. We heard a little bit earlier that there may be a spending bill that has been agreed upon with Congress, and if so, then we should know soon what the details are of that spending budget. But at this time, we don't know that, and so that's still an area of uncertainty. And so you see the representation of revenue as it is identified in this particular slide. Did I miss anything on that one, Ms. Ingram? Okay. There's an additional amendment for the CIP budget that I would also like to ask the school board to consider, and that is to amend the capital improvement projects budget to the amount identified in the facility condition assessment report dated October 7, 2017, reflecting the annual, estimated annual expenditure necessary for capital renewal of $16.1 million. We've heard this evening and other times, as we review this report, of what our needs are. We have been trying to address routine maintenance issues and facilities issues with roughly $2 to $3 million each year. And so we felt it important, again, to reflect what the renewal, what that budget is for the maintenance piece. This is not our overall CIP budget. You know, we will come back to the board and look at the facility condition report, and as the board decides to set some priorities, and then at a time later to submit to council its capital improvements request. But we thought, since we have this report and what it says we need to do for capital projects in the maintenance and renewal, that we would include this $16.1 million per that report. Now then, the total funds for the proposed school board budget would be the operating fund, which is 81.8% of our total budget, $329,509,17. Grant funds, 9.4% of our total budget, $38 million. School nutrition fund, 4.8%, $19,200,000. And you know, school nutrition operates as a separate fund, but again, is supported by the district and has to be approved by the board. Capital improvements then recommended at $16,106,275 for 4% of the total budget. Therefore, the total FY 18-19 budget that the board would be considering as its recommendation and proposal to the city council would be $402,815,402,815,292.
Okay. I think the .1% is just a typo, correct?
The rounding.
It's rounded, okay.
You know accountants, they stick to the rounding.
All right, any questions from Dr., for Dr. Boone in regards to her presentation, what she's just shared with us? Dr. Gabriel?
Can you, again, sorry, go back over the capital improvements part and how that is different from our ongoing recurrent maintenance, just one more time?
Okay, if you remember the report that was submitted, the facility assessment report, and they gave us what the conditions were and then what the cost would be. The recommendation was that we should be budgeting 2% of what that actual cost is to do that replacement piece. So that is what this number reflects.
The $16 million.
$16 million, right. So instead of requesting the $2 million, the only thing that we get for maintenance, we decided that it would be best to show what was in the facilities assessment report. This is what is being recommended for our facilities due to the age and the conditions is what we should be budgeting for.
Dr. Robinson?
I was just going to say, and again, it's not, just to clear up the terminology, it's considered a maintenance budget, but it's not really maintenance. Maintenance would be considered cleaning the buildings, taking care of things like that. This is actually try to replace mechanical parts, re-roof the buildings, windows, and things of that nature.
Structural components, right.
Right. But it does not reflect building replacements or rehab, major rehab, so this is infrastructure. Right, so what we would come back to the board at a time to talk about what would be your next priorities as it relates to actual new construction or rehab, but this is about what's needed for our infrastructure.
Bare minimum.
Ms. Bassin, did you?
Well, it's really a comment, and I'm glad that that is in there. As many times as we can reiterate that number, as we present our budget to city council, they need to see that as often, and you know, all those that spoke to the condition of our facilities tonight, you know, I want to see everybody along with us fighting for our facility conditions, our, you know, our operating budget on April 18th, because, you know, we can't have our building conditions the way they are, and so I'm glad to see that that number is actually reflected in the proposed budget.
So questions for Dr. Boone at this point? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the school board's proposed budget for fiscal year 2018-2019 as presented with the operating funds, grant funds, school nutrition fund, and capital improvements totaling the $402,815,292 as we have before us?
I make a motion to adopt the school board's proposed 2018-19 budget totaling $402,815,292.
Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
All right, further discussion? Comment? Ms. Doyle?
I just want to commend Dr. Boone and Ms. Ingram and Pearl Dow for very much putting together a strong budget for the year. And I really want to pull out some of the highlights, and you can see here that we really focused on people this year, and focusing on our academic improvements. Salary increases, addressing phase two of the pay and comp study, increasing the teacher starting pay, increasing long-term substitute daily rates, increasing bus driver starting hourly rate and bus attendance, providing incentives to hard-to-staff schools, focusing on technology and the E-rate. Those are just a few of the areas, but I really feel like we are following our vision and our goals and our efforts to move the division forward by focusing on our people and knowing that we really want to attract and retain great teachers and folks in our buildings, and I very much appreciate that that's our area of focus. And I just want to make that clear, that that's really big for us, and I want to commend the division, and I think that's really going to move our division forward, and I appreciate that, and I fully support this budget.
Ms. Bassin?
So I just have a question about process. So typically, in years past, we have, you know, presented the budget in a joint session with council. Is that something that we're going to do, or is that not on the calendar?
We don't have that current on the calendar. We've had scheduled meetings in the past. Last year, we didn't do a joint presentation. There was a request from the council for Dr. Boone to come over and do a presentation, ask, answer questions, but I haven't received any requests, and I'm not aware of any requests that's come over in that regards.
And I'll just, again, the board is aware, but remind the public that by state code, this budget has to be presented to the city by April 1st.
Dr. Gabriel?
Sure, everything that Courtney had mentioned about what is in the budget as it relates to people, I would like to, again, reiterate that. I have a question, and then I'll go through some other comments. Dr. Boone, within the budget, do you think that there might be some possibilities for the ABA specialist perhaps with, already within the budget?
Well, there are behavioral specialists that are identified in the budget to support some schools, as we've described in the last couple of budget meetings that we've had, to do that. I'm not in a position to address whether or not ABA specialist would be appropriate for us to add to this budget, because I would have to go back and look at what we currently have, so not appropriate for me to answer that tonight.
And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but there were, there were a lot of questions that board members had had, and Dr. Boone was very good to point out that she, she felt that we could have some wiggle room within the budget as it exists in order to make those items happen, you know, within the budget, that she would work with us. And so this budget that we adopt tonight is going to go to city council, and it is a budget that is asking for, you know, if we all vote on it, an additional six point two million dollars. I'm sorry, six, six million dol-
Six point two.
Yeah, it is six point two. Okay, so once city council gets that budget, then they're going to determine whether or not to fund it. And then it comes back to us, and then we have to, again, come back together and figure out where are we going to? Hopefully, it's fully funded, but if it's not, then we're going to be back here having this discussion. And so the way that I looked at it, because I, all of the concerns that are brought up are right on target. And even Dr. Boone said herself, she, she didn't agree with, didn't disagree with any of the things that we had brought up in our discussions past. But this package that we send to city council is the first step. And I'm sure that as the year goes on, that this budget process, we're going to try to work on if there are additional items that we need to include within the budget, that we can discuss that with council if we need to, as long as it is within our academic vision, the NPS redesign in order to push the division forward. So while we are not going to be able to get everything that we want, truly, your board here wants everything for your teachers. We hear exactly what you're saying. I think that this first pass is a start and that we will work very hard to make sure that we are at council and we share our concerns with them, and then we see where it comes back as far as fully funded, a tax increase. I heard that from someone. You know, how that's going to go in the future. Public education is the biggest portion of the state budget. It's the biggest portion of our city budget, and then it trickles down to us to determine how that is done effectively. And so I really do appreciate all the public comment, the emails, the calls that have come forth. We definitely take them to heart, and it is very important because if we invest in our kids, then it will be an economic driver for our region and for the state. So I thank the team for putting the budget together, for listening to the variety of concerns, and I'm ready to take the first stab at this budget going over to city council.
Ms. Doyle?
Can I also add? We had talked about doing a shared revenue formula or a funding formula with the city, and we were not able to really approach that this year in that way. But I encourage us moving forward to work with the city to come up with that funding formula so that we're not in this unknown every spring as to how much money the city is going to be able to fund us. So I encourage the division to continue its efforts in talking to the city for next year's budget.
Others? Comments at all? All right, so I just have a few things I'd like to add. Coming out of the last public hearing back at the South Side stem, there were a series of items that came forward, you've heard where, and I may not have explained it well earlier, where Dr. Boone and administration hearing comments went back and addressed the, the guidance counselors wanted out of every elementary school and some of the other items that we, that we discussed. The other thing that we've had conversations about as a governance team, we were trying to address some things that seem to be programmatic requests versus those things that were specific to this budget. I just want to share with you some of the things that we also have talked about moving forward in terms of programmatic efforts. We have a existing relationship with the Council of Great City Schools in the school board budget. You'll see mention of that relationship, and as part of that, there are opportunities for the Council of Great City Schools to do reviews of various departments and activities. So we have reviews that are ongoing with them, dealing with the transportation, or the others.
Finance and facilities.
Finance and facilities. We also have, as you may have heard at the last work session on the school board, talked about a special ed audit. We have work that's going to go forward around the governance of our Career and Technical Education High School. A lot of comments have been made about the importance of socially-emotional needs of children. So one of the things the school board does in addition to dealing with the budget is govern through policy. So I'm proud that this board has stepped forward some time ago and came forward with a wellness policy, came forward with a suicide prevention policy, and also have socially-emotional well-being integrated into the NPS redesign. So the focus on the wellness coordinator is another indication of support for that. And so I think it's important that we don't tie this budget process that the government requires us to do in this way, as though everything is some high stakes effort that's just tied to one year's budget. Other ongoing academic delivery, we've talked about, and you saw in the presentation, Dr. Boone give a refocus on the four pillars of the NPS redesign that's going forward. Recommendations around frontline customer service. How is it that our parents and our students are greeted anywhere, from the bus to the building to central administration, that's something that we will continue to give focus to, as well as collaborations and partnerships and wraparound services. All those things are going to continue moving forward. The other thing I wanted to mention, a lot of comments about the teacher salaries and taking care of, of our people, which I know this board and Dr. Boone fully supports. When Dr. Boone first arrived, we asked her to take a look at our pay and compensation. It'd been something that had been talked about and talked about and talked about and talked about. As a matter of fact, at one point, there was some research done with it, and the, the work didn't seem to be satisfactory, so we started from scratch again. And the recommendation from that work, as I know, I've heard and other school board members had heard, how important it was to get our staff, all staff, on the proper scale and step. And so what you have in this budget is the second phase of that. We followed the recommendation and did the first phase last year. This is now the second phase. So part of our competitiveness, as we've heard and as the report indicated, is that we were finding a lot of staff who would leave and go to another division because they weren't on the proper step. And so what you have in this budget is phase two of trying to make sure that staff are on the proper step. And while it says a three point three percent average or a three percent average, that's just that. So some folks may get a far bigger bump than some others, but I just wanted to make sure that there's some clarity around that. Also in terms of the climate, the school climate and resources and alternative ed. We went forward and looked at alternative ed. We've worked on in-school suspension supports and so forth, so that's, that's in here as well. I wish we could put everything in here. I know I and several others on the board have been a big champion for, you know, ask for what you need. That sixteen point one million dollars that's dealing with that maintenance piece is a big step in asking for what you need. The facilities report that we did that showed the 1.4 billion dollars in needs that we have, billion, I'm sorry, billion with a B, showed the needs that we have, and every month in work session, in school board meeting, month after month, we talk about those needs. I was talking to Dr. Gabriel earlier, and I said how this process kind of frustrates me because the idea is, is that if you don't put something in a request, that somehow people don't know what your needs are. And the example I used with her was, you know, when we have children and their feet grow, we know at some point they're going to need new shoes. So the fact that the child doesn't come to you and say that I need new shoes does not change the fact that everybody knows that their children are going to need new shoes. So I don't want it to be anybody to say that we don't know in this community about the needs that we have for our facilities and the needs that we have for our staff. We discuss them, we talk about them, and we look forward to talking about them again on the 18th. So I could go on and on, but this is tough work. I will say to the board colleagues, while, you know, the work that we did earlier with doing the additions of the GPS on the buses and the wellness coordinator, part of my challenge with, I'm, I'm glad we're doing that, but I was saying in the earlier meeting about how you end up in this line item discussion. So when you hear students come from J Cox or P B Young, and then it gives the, I think it can give the misimpression that somehow there's not concern there because there's no line item that says J Cox or no line item that says P B Young. But we know that in our equity policy and the work that we're doing and in the salary incentives for hard-to-staff schools, we're, we're trying to get there, and we want to make sure that we learn from that. So, you know, it's been said, a lot of things are in here. Sorry, I'm talking a long time, but I haven't slept in a week. So, uh, so I'd just like to take the opportunity to share those things and, and many more. I'll just pause there for now, but that, that maintenance money is critically important. The six point two million dollar request that we have, all of that, as Dr. Robinson said earlier, really depends upon the council funding that piece. So, you know, there's faith, that's the evidence of things not seen. This is an opportunity for someone to let us see something. And I think if we're able to see this commitment and get this budget fully funded, then I think it opens up the doors for some real new partnerships and handholding going forward because we all won't keep going through this same cycle over and over again. With that, the last thing I'll just say is we spend a lot of time and, and a lot of work, and the staff does too. They get compensated for their work in whatever way they get compensated. The board is largely volunteer work, and it takes a lot of effort and a lot of listening and a lot of talking to people to understand this, this work. So I just want to thank the board for all the commitment that I know that, that you put in and all the yelling at that you receive, but that you do for the love of children. So, anything else that anybody else would like to add before we finally call for the vote that we have before us? Andrew, any thoughts? You have, we've protected you from a lot of this, but if there's anything you'd like to, you know, share, you can do that now or you can do that before we, before we adjourn. That's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about. All right, so, yes. So, Mr. Butts, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Bassine?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner? Mr. Jordan?
Aye. All right, so thank you again. Appreciate the vote. Any other matters of the board? I know it's nine o'clock, but anything that, Dr. Gabriel?
I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity, we attended the reflections contest, the PTA reflections contest, and there was some really wonderful student art. There are several principals that are here with us tonight who had their students represented in dance and photography. And we have one of our high school students, she just sweeps in every category. She's at Norview now, and she's going to be graduating and going to, what'd she say, VCU or?
She's been accepted a couple places.
Couple of places, full scholarship. So it's great to see the students and their awards at, at this event. And I really commend the PTA, the Norfolk Council of PTA for sponsoring it and putting it together. And a couple of us were able to attend the Tijuara Regional Forum that was hosted by Woodrow Wilson High School. It's when the regional school boards come together, and we talk about policy issues that are concerning to our region. And the panel that we had at this meeting was a panel of our state senators and delegates. And one of the items that they had shared with us is that they noticed that our region was working better together. And when we were working better together, we were able to come to them in a block, and they could hear us and they could vote more comfortably, I guess you can say, on different issues. And so I, I really appreciate the dialogue that we had with them because, as I said before, the state budget, the majority of it is education. And so the more that we're at the table, especially with our colleagues from Virginia Beach and Suffolk and Portsmouth, and we advocate for what we need for schools, especially this whole mantra of unfunded mandates, it's important. So I really enjoyed that opportunity. Mr. Jordan was actually the moderator for that, and it was, well, you're the, you're the chairman.
Past chair.
You're the past chair.
Past chair.
So it was great, and the students of Portsmouth, their jazz band and their, the Port Town Magic, they were phenomenal, very good. And they greeted us with very nice hospitality.
Anyone else? Ms. Wagner? Oh, you had a smile on your face, so. Because it's time to go, all right. Well, amen to the smile on Ms. Wagner's face, and it's time to go. Meeting adjourned.